All right, good evening, everybody. The time is 6 o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hughes, absent. Councilmember Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall. Councilmember Hawkins, absent. Vice Mayor Anderson. Mayor Walter.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Our next item is Call to the Public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Our first speaker this evening is Sharon Gerard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. My name is Sharon Gerard. I live in Eloy, and I am candidate for the State House in this district. And I just would like to say that I'm going to have an event, which is called a Town Hall and a Legislative Update, this Thursday, 6 o'clock, at the Florence Community Library. We're gonna talk about the bills that are in session, how it's going, and answer questions, and listen to people in the community about their concerns, mainly about education, healthcare, water, and things that concern your life. There'll be some refreshments there, and some door prizes. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that I'm hoping. I don't know if there are regular town halls in this community, but we're gonna have one, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker request this evening is Melissa Remains, and I hope that I pronounced that correctly. It's okay, go ahead and correct me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Melissa Remains. I live at 2734 North Crestwood Court in Florence, Arizona. I am speaking on behalf of the Correction Education Department. I am the supervisor there. We are working on high school accreditation, and we're coming upon our three-year accreditation. Part of the standards is that we create a local advisory board to discuss our correction education, our lessons, the way we operate, to see if people in the community have comments or ways to improve our department. And I wasn't really sure where to go, so that is pretty much all I came with, and just reaching out to see about who would like to be a part of our advisory board.
Excellent. I'm really glad that you came this evening and presented this. Can we have Mr. Ben Bidder or our town manager follow up with you at the information that you provided?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Pete Rios.
Good evening. It's a pleasure, Mayor, to be here before you all and the council. Again, it's been a while, but nevertheless, I'm here, basically, to give you a quick bird's-eye view of the county, and the county is doing well. State of the county, not state of the state. State of the county, we're doing well. Our budget is solid. Our economic development is excellent. And Madam Mayor, want to report that last year, our revenues grew on all categories of properties by 8%. Our rainy day fund, as some people want to call it, is solid. So economically, we're doing well. And as you all know, we had two huge projects that were landed here in Pinal County, which is Nicola Motors in Coolidge, Arizona, which is really next to Eloy, and we have Lucid Motors in Casa Grande, that will be providing for Pinal County anywhere between 4,000 to 5,000 jobs. Let me, on another note, Madam Chair, say that I will be running again for county supervisor. This is part of my four-year farewell tour. So I'm gonna be visiting all my communities, because this is my last hurrah. Do I have opposition? Yes, I have a former Pinal County employee from Picacho that will be running for this office. I thought he was gone, because we gave him a $60,000 pension, but I guess he wants 60,000 more. So I do have opposition. Thirdly, Madam Mayor, I do want to indicate that what is happening here in Florence with the prison closure is something that I simply do not understand, because that is one heck of a way to run a railroad. You don't announce to the public and to Florence on the state of the state address that we're closing one of your state prisons. You basically need to plan in advance for these types of things. You need to work with legislators. You need to work with leaders in the community in order to do something like this. My hope is that it will take years before they do close it, because the counties are not ready to take any state inmates in any way, shape, or form. And in addition to that, they have a $1 billion rainy day fund, so they can carry that prison for a number of years. And one more thing, I got 25 seconds, is look forward to working with Florence on J-Loos, on the joint land use study in respect to the National Guard. We have to work close with you all and with the Guard, because we don't want to lose them. But at the end of the day, I can't believe I did it in three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rios, for coming out this evening. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? With that, we'll go ahead and close call to the public. Our next item is Item 6A for Presentations. Really looking forward to this. We have an update on the Quinn Building repairs by Tom and Lynn Smith.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Smith. How are you both this evening?
Happy we're doing real good.
Very happy to be here.
We're glad to have you.
First of all, I'd like to thank a few people, but not my name. First of all, Mayor and Council, staff, and a whole bunch of other people that helped. We have now come to a point with the Quinn Building, the plans are done. We presented to the town to OK, or tell us to change, or whatever, this week, and then construction will begin. The reason for the new plans is the plans that were 10 years old don't even work with the town codes today. They don't work with SHIPPO historically, or the National Park Service. So we had to step back, find a good architect that has a good relationship with SHIPPO and the town of Florence, which we did, and Bob Graham. So it has been done. The plans are done. They'll be turned in, and we'll start construction. This building, to me, is one of the most historic buildings in this town. Maybe a small building, but as old as any of them, and it was, not only at one time, a butcher shop, but all kinds of stuff. And then it became the telephone exchange, the first time with the plug-in telephones, and then another telephone company after that. And then it became the law offices of Tom Fulbright and Ernest McFarland, ex-governor and senator. I think it's worth saving, and I was happy with how all of you and the town and the people of this town have come together to help us get it started. I want to let you know that I had one of your ex-building inspectors check out these plans, the new plans, and he was aware of the old plans and knew them well. When he looked at these plans, he said, "These are doable," so it can be done. Now, there's a lot to be done. The front of the building looks good. It's not. The front and side of the building on Main and 8th Street estimated right now at $36,000 to replace what has to be done to those walls, because one of the previous tenants, shall we call them, put concrete all over them. All that concrete has to come off. It doesn't match or go well with adobe. So that will be all redone. Also, if you look inside the building, the center wall from front to back, half of it's gone. That was taken out by a previous tenant of this building. That was a structural wall. Therefore, the roof sags. So that wall will be redone, all out of adobe, just like it was to start with. And then we're gonna go ahead and keep all the framework in the ceiling, in the roof, but we're gonna go ahead and re-support it all, so all of it is still there. This building originally was an L-shaped building. The southeast quarter was added later when it was a telephone company. So it still has wooden walls, but they'll both have to be replaced. Remember, there's such a thing as termites. We have to control them, and we have to replace what needs to be replaced. But the way things are going right now, it looks like we can save and keep 85% to 90% of the original building. And that is something that SHIPPO is real happy with, the National Park Service is real happy with. So I think we're doing the right thing at the right time to get it saved. Do you have anything to say?
No.
Nothing to say? That's a first, okay.
I'm just on the tip.
We want to thank you very much, and everybody have a real nice day.
Thank you very much. I am quite impressed with the presentation and with all of the work that was displayed. All of the, if you have not yet had an opportunity to go over and check everything out, go ahead and check them out. And the buildings that Lynn and Tom have already restored in the community, they're beautiful. We have a successful business in one on Main Street, Michael Bacca's. He's at that lower portion. Yep. And then he lives in the upstairs. It is gorgeous. So thank you. I'm looking forward to the next update as well. Our next presentation is Item B. This is going to be Presentation Recognizing Florence Being Named the Safest City in Arizona by the National Council for Home Safety and Security. Police Chief Bruce Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, it is indeed a pleasure to be standing before you tonight to deliver some excellent news. Just as the mayor has said, the National Council for Home Safety and Security has designated the town of Florence as the safest community in the state of Arizona for 2020. Mayor and Council, I'd have to go ahead and tell you, that's out of 38 cities with a crime rate of 6.2 per 1,000 citizens. The next agency that was closest to us was more than half of that. So congratulations to the town of Florence. And we do have a certificate here that says the National Council for Home Safety and Security certifies that the town of Florence, Arizona, has achieved the ranking of safest town in Arizona 2020. I would like to go ahead and present that to council, and hopefully council will be gracious enough to allow the police department to hang this in their lobby way.
Absolutely. All right. Item 7 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval to enter into a contract with Centimark Corporation for Roof Repairs at Fire Station Number One and the South Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility in an amount not to exceed $53,682.47. Item B, adoption of a partial release of the judgment lien insofar as it relates to the real property located at 7901 West Desert Blossom Way in Florence. Item C, approval of accepting the register of demand ending January 31, 2019, in an amount of $1,963,845.29. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like anything removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item 8, unfinished business. 8A is reaffirmation of the 2020 rate increase as adopted by Council Resolution Number 1664-18. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the fee schedule of terms, rates, and charges for town-owned water and wastewater utilities. Ms. Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Yes, this is to reaffirm the rates that were set forth in the 2018 utility rate study. We held two hearings on this, one public hearing on February 18, which there were no comments from the public on this. And then we also held one on the 21st to receive comments. At this time, we had five people come to left without any comments or attending the comments section. They were just general comments, basically about the rates. And we also had an opportunity to resolve an issue that one of the residents had in regards to their utility account. So, in fact, there were just general comments made about, of course, anytime rates are increased, they're concerned about it. Luckily, in this utility rate study, we tried to smooth out the rates so they don't impact the customers significantly. So at this time, we're asking for a reaffirmation of those rates and to go ahead and set the rates beginning April the 1st.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions by council? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to reaffirm the 2020 rate increase as adopted by Council Resolution 1664-18.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Item B is Ordinance Number 690-20. This is the second reading and discussion, approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the town of Florence Code of Ordinances by striking Sections 3230, 3232, 3233, 32120, 32121, 32200, 32201, 32202, eliminating the Library Advisory Board, the Arts and Culture Board, and the Florence Youth Commission, and by modifying the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Membership Section 3286, Powers and Duties Section 3287, and Meeting Section 3215. Mr. Brian Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, this is the second reading of the ordinance that was first brought to you guys at a work session about a month ago, and we read the first reading two weeks ago at the last meeting. This is combining the Library Advisory Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and the Arts and Culture Commission into one large body that will have nine members, two alternates, and will also allow for two, or I'm sorry, three members to be in the town planning area and not in the town limits. And it'll also have as a liaison a member from the Florence Teen Council. And so that would combine all those into one, excuse me, that would meet once a month from here on out. So this is the second reading, and it does require action.
All right. Are there any questions from council? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance 690-20.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. I'm just gonna make a note right after, since this just passed. I had consulted prior with council members, and Judy Hughes was on Parks and Rec, but she was also on other boards. Kristin Larson was over the Youth Advisory Committee. Since we just had that consolidation, she is going to be the new council liaison.
You'll make a note. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9, new business. Item A is Resolution Number 173120. This is discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving, reaffirming, restating, and re-establishing the Florence Downtown Redevelopment Area boundaries and conditions of slum or blight based upon ongoing substantial actions taken to remove the slum and blight conditions in accordance with Arizona revised statute. Mr. Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me. As was presented to you a while back, when we awarded the contract for the redevelopment plan update, state law changed last year, and as effective as of last August 3, as I recall, they're put in place a few more steps in order to keep our redevelopment plan current. One of those is to reaffirm the existing boundaries of our area. That's all this really does tonight. It's all part of Chapter 12, Article 3 of Under Public Housing, and it's a standard process that we're doing. The resolution, joint preparation between myself and the town attorney, most of it is his, that's why it's all legal. And then the map that was attached to the resolution and the written legal description encompasses the area as it currently exists.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
What does this cost us as far as the redevelopment plan?
The contract amount is 113 and change.
Okay, thank you.
For the update. All right. We're approximately 35%, 40% into it right now, and as you might have seen in our monthly report, there is an open house scheduled for March 12 in this room from 5 until 7:00. That is to be a work session primarily to focus on land use fabric within that area to see where adjustments might be made. And if you haven't noticed yet, and based on some previous conversations between HDAC and the council, we have Danny Smith, the Graham County Board of Supervisors Vice Chair, Vice Chair, and the founder and president of the Safford Downtown Association, will be coming in to speak on the efforts that they have done in Safford. That was one of the sample communities that were laid out in our joint meeting with HDAC as to downtown efforts and examples to look at as to what might be effective for Florence. So we do invite people to come to that and just to listen to him speak if nothing else. The meeting has been posted as a potential quorum for yourselves and every other board and commission we have.
Will you give us the date of that?
March 12.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Harmer. And at that time, we need a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1731-20.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 1731-20.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B is Resolution Number 1734-20. This is discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, establishing regular meeting locations, dates, and times for the Florence Town Council and town boards and commissions.
Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor, council members, this is an item that establishes the meeting dates for all our boards and commissions. This is something that Ms. Garcia typically does early in the year, once the new members have been appointed and they've maybe decided dates and times, that it may be different from what is previously done. In this case, she's simply allowing for the new Community Services Advisory Board to meet on the second Thursday at 6:00 PM. I believe all the other meeting dates and times will be the same, so just really a housekeeping item for this.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions? Vice Mayor?
Work sessions, it says that the work sessions may be moved to the library. Don't we have work sessions occasionally at Parkside and Caliente?
We can hold special meetings there.
We do intend this year to hold two special meetings, and I believe Lisa's working on that.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1734-20.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Item C is the first reading of Ordinance Number 691-20. This is an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending Sections of Chapter 32.1, Town Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, this is another housekeeping item. This is amending the section, or the Chapter 32.001 of the town code, and it's allowing for the new advisory board and removing the old advisory boards. Just want to make a note that you have the amended corrected RCA, which had the vote of no and the vote of yes were reversed. Those have been corrected on your amended RCA. There is one other discrepancy. Item 3, under the Boards and Commissions, says Historic District Advisory Committee. That is Historic District Advisory Commission, and that'll be corrected on the second reading.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, this is the first reading, so there is no action at this time.
Correct.
Thank you. Item D is discussion approval/disapproval to adopt the public involvement plan for the general plan update. Mr. Larry Harmer.
Again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. ARS 9-461-06, as part of the general plan update processes, it's prescribed that a formal public involvement plan be adopted. The plan that you have attached, prepared by Michael Baker International, our consultant for this project, is pretty comprehensive. It includes satellite meetings away from Town Hall, up in Anthem, out at Five Parks. It includes a variety of methods. It includes a variety of methods of obtaining comment and public input, including focus groups, community workshops, media, digital, you know, online presence, and also it'll be a link on our website for any questionnaires and periodic updates to the process itself. We actually have a representative of our consultant, Kevin Kugler, who's a project manager for Michael Baker International, if you have any specific questions on the involvement plan.
Councilmember Wall, go ahead.
After reading through this, it's obvious how important this phase of the general plan update is. I feel we need to ensure that as many residents as possible are included in the process, and I know that not all residents are keyed into some of the communication efforts that are listed, and I would just like to make sure that we add to the social media aspect the Nextdoor website, which a lot of people who aren't on Facebook or Twitter, or some of those broader social media platforms, may not see. Also, there are weekly newsletters that come out of Anthem that if we can finagle our way into those newsletters, I know sometimes that's not the easiest thing to do, but that would be another way to make sure that we're getting in touch with a wider range of residents.
Those are good points. Also, we have the option of including within our own town water bills, putting in flyers, things of that nature. Also, if you noticed in the plan, page three of six, the public involvement portion runs throughout every phase of the general plan update, not, you know, not just at the end of it when you have the review periods and public hearings.
Yeah.
It's a process, so we'll start up here very quickly as we start moving forward with actual hardcore discussions. They're in the data collection stage right now.
Right, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt a public involvement plan for the general plan update.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. And that motion carries.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Legislative update with Mr. Benjamin Bitter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I want to provide an update on just three bills tonight, the first being our House Bill twenty-seven oh five, which staff has largely championed and helped Representative Shope write the bill and now have it presented. That bill has been stuck in the Rules Committee for the past few weeks, waiting an amendment. We have proposed that amendment to the Railtors Association. They have accepted that amendment, so we expect that that bill will be moving forth out of the committee. Again, just as a reminder, that's the House, the blighted and vacant buildings bill that would create a registry for those buildings to ensure that the properties are being used adequately. Another bill that is of great importance to Florence is House Bill twenty-five fifty-one, that is the Heritage Fund, and that bill successfully passed out of the House and so is on to the Senate. That is good news if we can get additional dollars for historic preservation and for park preservation from the state. Right now, it's projected for a ten million dollar appropriation, so if that's the case, that'd be great for the whole state, and so we'll continue to advocate for that one. And then finally, we discussed at our last meeting, the bill that talked about certificates of needs and necessities and the possibility of removing that requirement for all communities and all areas. That bill did die in the House, and we're just monitoring to see if it pops up on any other bill due to the legislative process at any time. The total text of any bill that is moved through the legislature can be removed and replaced. It's called a striker bill, and so there are a few bills that are somewhat related to certificates of need and necessity that we continue to monitor just to see if those are gonna have that striker. But again, at this time, the original bill failed, did not advance through the committees. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What was the amendment that needed to be made with the real estate?
There's a lot of different language in terms of locations, what constitute a vacant and abandoned building, and so some of the definitions were just tightened up. We really feel that the bill as it stands after the amendment is still eighty to ninety percent effective at accomplishing what we wanted, but it was really just some conforming changes, some definition changes, and what it applied to, so.
In regards to the other bills that are similar to the House bill, which would remove that C O N requirement, could you follow up with us a list of what those bills are and any suggestions that we can make to help aid that to going towards a striker bill?
I guess, Madam Mayor, could you clarify that a little bit? Help me understand what you're asking.
So you referenced other bills that verbiage from that original could be transposed into it? Could you provide those bills and some of that verbiage that could be transposed to whereas we could sign in and provide our feedback?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right. Our next item is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I would like to call your attention to the Economic Prosperity section. Ben noticed that Queen Creek provided an update very recently in terms of relational data regarding single-family permits, and they tied that to valuation. That was a very powerful graphic. So we thought it best to try and attempt to do the same thing as part of the manager's report. So what you see is year-over-year building permit data from twenty-eighteen to nineteen. Unfortunately, mine's in black and white, so you can't really tell which ones, eighteen and nineteen, but it was done in color, so hopefully you're able to see it on the screen in color. But the part that's most impressive is when you actually relate that building permit data to actual valuation being provided to the Town of Florence on a monthly basis, and it's quite shocking. The lowest value that you can see on the graph showing twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and twenty-twenty is five million dollars in one month, but you'll notice that two months in the recent past, including this January, our valuation increased in that month by twenty million dollars of construction. So, quite shocking what growth and permits means in terms of the valuation of the city. So I wanted to show this in a graphic sense. Are any questions on the remainder of the report?
No, but I also like how you followed it up, whereas you provided us the information that in December, Arizona's twelve-month total of the single-family building permits was thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one, or four-point-four percent than a year ago.
Yep.
So for Florence, the twelve-month period ending on December thirty-first saw an increase of sixty-six point eight percent.
Right.
Over the same period last year.
That's right.
So again, Florence has far exceeded the number of single-family permits issued in two thousand and eighteen and ended up with three hundred and seventy-two permits for the year, which is the highest annual since two thousand and eight, as you referenced in your report.
And hopefully it continues strong. We believe it'll continue strong throughout this year, and hopefully we're gonna add some commercial growth as well.
Excellent, thank you. I loved the detail in your reports, and the graph was a great addition. Department reports. Are there any questions for any department heads? All right, excellent reports as well, ladies and gentlemen. Our call to the public, this is our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Go ahead, and closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Wall?
I apologize, but I was out of town all last week, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Larson?
I actually don't have anything either.
Councilmember Cortez?
How did I do this last week? Oh, I attended the spring parade at Caliente. That was fun, and I was appreciative that they invited me to come and participate with them. I did attend, oh, I went to on Friday, I went to an event at the Visitor Center where there was grants being awarded, but the new copper, what do you call that? Cathode will now be on display at the Visitor Center, which is really neat to look at. I mean, it is a cool-looking thing. I've never seen copper other than like in wire and stuff, so it was neat to see like what it looks like outside or in its like rawness, so that was neat. Other than that, pretty slow week for me.
Vice Mayor?
Well, there's always stuff going on and down, and I know that we could sit and talk all night about almost every day there's something. I was fortunate enough to go to the Women's Club with the mayor and...
And your beautiful wife?
Yeah, and my beautiful wife, and we had a great time. It was sold out. Matter of fact, they had to turn people away that were trying to buy tickets because we were already at capacity. Our fire department and police department were the escorts, and they showed off quite a bit over there. Two of the escorts that are here tonight, and so I want to thank Chief Wall and Terry for their efforts. Thank the Women's Club for all they do. They provide a lot of charity contributions to our town. I was surprised at all the things they contribute to besides the scholarship funds. So, that's all I have.
Very well said, and the ladies raised funds that helped all three high schools within our district. It was nice to see people from not only in our community but around our community, and they also had state and national representatives from the Greater Florence Women's Group that attended. So, that was a super amazing event. We have so much more coming up. Ladies and gentlemen, I saw today, police, fire, we had our sheriff, some other town staff members that came and read to Florence K eight. This is our Read Across America event, Dr. Seuss. We elongate this event to go all week long at our local K eights, and, you know, we're encouraging people to read to kids. Coming up in March, we also have March fourteenth to fifteenth, if you've not already gotten your tickets yet, the Florence Music Festival. And then there's some other awesome events, like the Arizona Speaks Humanities Lecture, coded messages and songs of the Underground Railroad on March twentieth. We have our Powwow on March twenty-eighth, as well as our Spring Festival in Anthem for the month of March. This is coming up on spring break. We have some great programming through our Parks and Rec, which is now known as Community Services Department, not to be confused, so if you visit the website, everything's listed, you could register online.
There's one other thing that we should mention, a current event, that our town clerk got married this week. And she said that her car broke down. That means she's not here tonight. I don't believe that, just no way.
All right, we do have an executive session this evening, so with that, we need a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
We're gonna, as Brian's done in two weeks, correct? It's a...
Brian, is this your last, this isn't your last council meeting, though?
Last council meeting?
No, he has one more.
You have one more.
This is it? I thought you had one more. I guess we owe him a round of applause.
Brian, we would've brought cupcakes this evening. I guess we're gonna have to do some at the Community Services Department now. We're going to allow you to come on up for a moment and close out this meeting before we go into executive session. I want to put you on the spot to share some of your successes, what you enjoyed.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I've enjoyed all of it. It's been an amazing six years. Florence kinda gets to you, as I think most people know, and so I will never forget my time here, and I've had a lot of good experiences, the events, the programs, the facilities, but mostly the staff. And I say, my staff over at the Community Services Department has been amazing. I would put them up against any staff anywhere in the country as far as Parks and Recreation professionals. They've really grown over the last six years, and I couldn't be more proud of them. But I'm also excited and, or have been excited and proud to be part of the management team here and all the great professionals that they've assembled over the years. So, it's been great. It's been, I always tell people, this is kind of a cliche, but it's not goodbye, it's see you later, because I will be back and visiting often. I've made some of the friends here, so thank you so much for your support and hope to see everybody around.
Thank you. We'll have to have a get-together before you go. All right, with that, we need a motion to go to executive session.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.[1779.91]